The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Orion, Alderman Cone, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Rice, Alderman Martin, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Cone. Eighteen present.
Quarant being present, we are blessed today to have with us Pastor Marcus Adams from Living Word Church, Church of God in Christ, to lead us in prayer today. Pastor?
Thank you, President. Good morning. Let us pray. God of heaven, as we gather in this august body of leaders, our prayer today is that your will be done as we go through the activities on today's agenda. We take what we are prepared and multiply these efforts only as you can, that you will steer our intentions to align with your precious and righteous will. Remind us of your faithful provision when our efforts fail us or fall short. We meet to serve the greater St. Louis community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, and make decisions to promote the common good. Father, we recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of all city of St. Louis citizens are to be valued and their voices heard. As trusted servants here in this august body, we seek your blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. And now, we speak into the spiritual realm that we are open to others' ideas, respectful of our differences, and not threatened by them. With the spirit of unity in action, we ask that you bless this body with being able to move forward with a shared purpose and find both compromise and common ground can be achieved. Thank you, Lord, for being our source of guidance today, in your son's precious name, and the whole house said, amen.
Let's give Pastor Adams a big round of applause for opening us up on prayer today. We really appreciate it. Dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I have a very special guest I want to introduce today. He is new to the St. Louis area. He's going to be moving into the area. Sergeant Kyle Wick, who will be leaving the military armed forces soon and will be residing in St. Louis and a special friend of my granddaughter's.
Let's welcome him. Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I would like to welcome today as my special guest the new communication directors for room 200 in the mayor's office and the Ninth Ward resident, Mr. Jacob Long.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board. Today, October 25th, in 1964 was the first time the Rolling Stones appeared on the Ed Sullivan Show, but most importantly, this is National Frankenstein Day. While I appreciate his fervor for the holiday, I would ask that Alderman Ornowitz take off of his Frankenstein mask for the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much.
I don't know that Alderman Ornowitz. Approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to say at least Alderman Ornowitz wore his nice pumpkin orange shirt.
Yeah.
Mr. President, members of the committee, I'd like to, members of the board, I'd like to move for approval of minutes dated October 18th, 2019.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd. Entertained a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 13th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed into Alderman's mailboxes.
We would dispense with line item six and seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items eight through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board, excuse me. Board Bill 135, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance allowing persons, business enterprises, and other entities, organizations, and groups who reserve any of the City of St. Louis Parks amenities by permit issued by the City's Department of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry to exclude from the permitted area persons carrying firearms with accordance to 571-107 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri, regardless of whether carried concealed on or about their person and whether they hold a concealed carry permit or endorsement and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 136, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis establishing multiple public works and improvement projects within the City of St. Louis. Board Bill 137, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate public surface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel on Frederick Street and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 138, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance regulating the storage, transportation, and disposal of waste tires and the permitting of waste tire haulers and tire dealers and providing penalties for violations of the provisions thereof. Board Bill 139, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, subsurface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in easternmost five foot of Missouri Avenue from Cherokee Street, south approximately 115 feet to a point abutting City Block 1558 as bounded by Cherokee, Missouri, Potomac, and Jefferson in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing accordance with Charter authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to suspend the rules and introduce Board Bill 140.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth. Let's suspend our rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 140. Seconded by Alderman from the first, is the board bill on everyone's desk?
Yes, there's a copy on everyone's desks.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Orion, Alderman Cone, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed. Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Rice, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Cone, Alderman Boyd. Twenty-four aye votes.
By a vote, stay in motion, Alderman from the first, and introduce Board Bill 140. Madam Clerk, please read the forward for Board Bill 140.
Board Bill 140, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Boyd, and Alderman Howard, an ordinance amending ordinance 67799, Section 2, to be codified as sub-
Commit some order. Please proceed.
As subsection 10.04.285E of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis regulating the conditions of animal kept outdoors, amending ordinance 66595, Section 6, to be codified as subsection of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis regarding the establishment and use of dog parks allowing for waivers of certain requirements repealing section 10.04.010 of ordinance 67799 and enacting in lieu thereof a new section 10.04.010 to be codified in the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis pertaining to definitions enacting a new code section 10.12.070 to the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis prohibiting the decline of cats and amending ordinance 70889, Section 3.2B.1, adjusting the requirements for a dangerous dog posted notice. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill 140 to health.
So noted.
Reference to committee?
To the Parks Committee, Board Bill 135. To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 136, 137, and 139. To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 138. To Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 140. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of ways and means with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 18, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance approving the petition to establish the new state West Community Improvement District, establishing the new state West Community Improvement District and finding a public purpose for the establishment of the new state West Community Improvement District. Board Bill 98, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving the petition to establish the Olive West Community Improvement District, establishing the Olive West Community Improvement District, reaffirming certain findings of blight and finding a public purpose for the establishment of the Olive West Community Improvement District. Board Bill 113, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving the petition to establish the 2019 Grand Center and Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose therefore and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 129, sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Green, Alderman Navarro, Alderman Rice, Alderman Ingracia, and Alderman Middlebrook. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Department of Human Services on behalf of the City of St. Louis to accept a grant award from the Family and Community Trust in the amount of $35,000 from the No Kid Hungry Missouri School Year 19 Summer Special Grant Program and to expand those funds as part of the City of St. Louis Child and Adult Care Food Program, After-School Meal Program, and Summer Food Service Program starting in 2019-2020 school year as set forth in the grant agreement attached heretofu as Exhibit A, appropriating said funds and authorizing the Director of Human Services upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment to expand such funds as permitted by the Grant Award Agreement and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 119, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the City seven first amended on-airport passenger vehicle rental concession agreements at St. Louis Lambert International Airport and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading.
With dispens for line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 106, sponsored by President Reed and the following all the persons. Vacoro, Davis, Koltar, Middlebrook, Clark Hubbard, Mohammed, Murphy, Pam Boyd, Rice, Ingracia, Hubbard, Howard, and Jeffrey Boyd. An ordinance establishing reporting requirements for licensees selling firearms to report failures of a background check system when a firearm purchase is denied within the limits of the City of St. Louis and containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 128, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 21st Ward Liquor Control District as established herein for a period of five years from the effective date hereof, containing exceptions and allowing during the moratorium period for the limited transfer of existing license under certain circumstances and renewal of existing licenses. Board Bill 104, sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for the Gravoy Morgan Ford Redevelopment Area, approved by ordinance 65177 dated February 27, 2001, by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement and extending the implementation schedule now calling for projects to be completed by September 30, 2029. Board Bill 111, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for 4545 through 4559 Le Cleed Avenue area. Board Bill 127, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for the West End Redevelopment Area, approved by ordinance 64392 dated June 25, 1998, by adding the implementation schedule now calling for projects to be completed by May 1, 2029. That is the extent of the perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 107, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Tyus, and Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance directing the City of St. Louis Division of Police establish nine police districts the boundaries of which shall be drawn in accordance with the map set forth in Exhibit A attached heretofu and to the extent the Commissioner of the City of St. Louis Division of Police deems reasonable and appropriate in light of changing community law enforcement needs, Division of Police resource, including officers, shall be apportioned equally amongst the nine police districts and each police district.
Alderman from the 21st, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 107.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move Board Bill 107 to the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Board Bill 107 should be moved to the perfection informal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance to submit a 2020 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Entitlement Program. Authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute agreements with HUD for the receipt of 2020 CDBG home ESG and HOPOR funds.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 126. Alderman from the 17th. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 126.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we perfect Board Bill 126.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Alderman from the 17th, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, this is the annual block grant allocation years ago. This used to be subject to quite a bit of controversy. However, four or five years ago, we've lost a lot of latitude in how we spend this money and so we more or less get a presentation from CDA, which we did, and there's not really a whole lot of input on this. But in any event, we passed it out of committee without even a request by any of the members to have it continued, so.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th that we perfect Board Bill 126. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
We would dispense with line item 17 and 18, report of enrollment.
We have none.
Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of board, I ask for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Miss Lane is unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, October 29th, Rules will be having a meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Okay. Streets will have a meeting at 11:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, October 31st, Health and Human Services will have a meeting 11:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. And Friday, November 1st, full board meeting 10:00 a.m. in the chambers.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of board. I would like to wish my wife a happy 29th wedding anniversary. We will celebrate tonight, but it's officially on Sunday. Twenty-nine years.
Any further announcements, Alderman from the 28th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone is invited to kick off Halloween a little early this weekend. The Central West End Halloween Party kicks off tomorrow at 11:30 with the children's parade, 1 o'clock, the pet parade, and then in the evening, the streets will be closed. The streets will be closed all day, so everybody come on down. And then 6 o'clock to midnight, adults only, big Halloween party, costume contest. It should be a lot of fun, so I hope to see you all there.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to congratulate our colleague from Ward 16, who just brought a new barn home the other day. Congratulations, Tom. And also, Mr. President, I have a meeting scheduled, Health and Human Services, for Thursday, October 31st, 11:30. Irene Augusta will be coming down to give us an update on the homeless people for this upcoming winter.
All right, thank you. Health and Human Services, Thursday, 11:30. Did you get it, Madam Clerk? Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of board, I wanted to make sure that we moved Rules, and I didn't hear it, to Wednesday at 11, I think is what we said, because on Tuesday, I will be celebrating my 31st wedding anniversary with my husband.
Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to invite everyone out today for the Core Square Halloween Block Party from 5 to 7 p.m. It'll just be a good, family-friendly, fun event with smores, barbecue, popcorn, movies, and just a good time in the Core Square neighborhood. So it's from 5 to 7 today. Kids are encouraged to wear their costumes and just come out and have a good, safe time in the Fifth Ward. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. My birthday is Halloween. Me and the stress bird, we're the same age. His eyes, that's why his eyes are so red, because he's stressed out for living in the Fourth Ward. Happy birthday to me. Somebody want to sing me a song?
Happy birthday. Let's sing "Happy Birthday" to Alderman Moore. Ready?
And the stress bird.
One, two, three. Happy birthday.
Da, da, da. Da, da, da. Come on, John, you're supposed to be singing.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
You.
Thank you.
Now, you know I was off key, Alderman. I was trying to step back from the mic. Alderman from the second.
Mr. President and members of the board, I just want to wish my youngest child, Cree Autumn Middlebrook, a happy second birthday, which is tomorrow.
We also have, you know, our very own John Watson Jr. at Maple Temple Church is celebrating its 111th church anniversary this Sunday, October 27th. It's at 5195 Maple Avenue. It's from 12 to 3 p.m. Dinner is being served afterwards. And at 1 p.m., they are acknowledging Reverend John Watson Jr. for his many works, you know, throughout the community and also within the church. Everyone is invited. Let's give him a big round of applause and on the 111th anniversary. Sunday. Yes, Sunday, October 27th. Alderman from the-
Members of board, I want to point a personal privilege, but I want everybody else to get their notices, if that's all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the board. We have our fifth annual Hyde Park Spooktacular event coming up this Saturday from 12 to 6 o'clock. We'll be building a hunted house in Hyde Park. We'll have face painting, pumpkin decoration. Just be a nice, fun day for the kids. You got a chance, come on out this Saturday. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 25th? Are you up at the mic? Yeah, I didn't think so. Alderman from the 22nd?
Members of board, I would be remiss if I didn't say happy birthday to my mother, who is celebrating her birthday on Sunday as well as our anniversary.
Just to make sure that was not missed. Happy birthday to mother. Can't miss that one. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to take a moment to address a Rules issue. As the Chair of Rules, I received a correspondence from the mayor's office dated October 23rd in which she implored you, as the President of the Board of Aldermen, to bring the matter of the freeholders before the board. I want everyone to know, there is no such provision in our Rules. You can bring resolutions and bills. I'm very much a Rules person. Everybody knows it. If I don't agree with you, I will say that to you. But I will, I do want to take up for you. And thank you for trying to make cool heads prevail. This problem is between the mayor and the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. You do not have the power under the Rules to bring it out. And the mayor has had ample opportunity to try to bring this to a closure with some consideration and working together. I'm really disappointed that she does not understand what advise and consent or advice and consent means. And I actually have done the- And I actually have done the... I've investigated this clear up to the United States Senate, which also has the rule. The president actually sends his people over to the Chair of the Rules, of the committee where his nominees are put in, along with the majority or minority leader. In this case, it would be the Chair and the Vice President. And they work out a deal. And they do that on all steps, from the president to the governor to local legislative bodies. And that's why there is a difference between a nomination and an appointment. And when you get to do an appointment, then you don't have to talk to the legislative body. But when you want to do a nomination and you have to go through the Board of Aldermen, then you have to listen to advice and consent. If you don't listen to my advice, you don't get my consent. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. And thank you for clearing that up. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, all members are present.
Excellent. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn until next Friday, November the first.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd. Seconded by Alderman from the 25th and the 10th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Stand adjourned.